Tuesday, January 8th, please stand for our invocation led by Dr. Charles Dent, City of Grace Mobile, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you that you woke us up this morning. And Father God, we thank you that you have given us insight and given us vision to lead. And Father, we pray that we understand that vision is more important than buildings and budgets because without vision, we perish. Father, we ask today that you teach us to love one another because love conquers all. Teach us, oh God, that we need to be reminded that we are called to serve and not to be served. Father God, teach us today that we are a reflection of the city and the city is a reflection of us. We ask, God, that you bring us together as one so that we can have one voice and there'll be unity among us because, God, when there's unity, you command blessings. So we thank you for this council. We thank you for the city. We thank you for all that you're doing, and we thank you. In Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The rules of the council are serious rules that we ask that everybody would abide. First, we ask that you turn off or silence all of your electronic devices. Any person designed to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution ordinance, appeal a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must clearly state both your name and your address. Any person designed to speak on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak. All subject matters must be pertinent to City of Mobile business. If you have not given the clerk's office that proper notice, you won't be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed five minutes to make your presentation. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute will remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that all of your time has expired. When addressing the council, we ask that there be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements ought to be made to me, the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to speak. To maintain the call, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Again, good morning, and thank you for your interest in your municipal government. Ma'am, city clerk?
Approval of minutes of December 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved to second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved.
Communications from the mayor.
No remarks.
Adoption of the agenda.
Some move.
Second.
Proper motion and second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals. We have the appeal of Jeffrey and Pamela Kent concerning the ARB's denial of the application regarding the retention of railing, gate, and planters at 1654 Government Street.
Some move.
It's an appeal.
Oh, public hearing.
Mrs. Castle?
Yes, Councilman Manzi. It appears Ms. Kent is not here, and I would ask that the council--
Is either Mr. or Mrs. Kent here in attendance?
No. Okay. So I would ask the council to affirm the action of the ARB, and I would also ask the council, please, to recognize and acknowledge the members of the ARB who came here to support their decisions. Steve Stone--
Let's get your name, please.
Steve Stone, the chair of the ARB.
Mr. Stone. Do we just read--
Yes.
District two. All right. You're doing a wonderful job. Yes, sir.
Bob Allen.
Yes, sir. Mr. Allen.
John Rusick.
Mr. Rusick, thank you. Thank you all for your service and for your participation and your attendance here in today's meeting.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Move to deny the appeal.
Second.
The proper--
Affirm.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right.
I stand corrected.
Well, then, give me. Come on.
Motion would be to affirm the holding decision of the--
Second.
The proper motion and second to affirm the decision of the ARB. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
For the record, I know we've held this up numerous times, and it's our understanding as a council at pre-conference that the applicant does have knowledge that we will be discussing today, so there's no misunderstanding. That adequate notice had been given, so I would like that to be into the record as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The appeal, the ruling of the ARB board is affirmed.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to rezon property at 5188 and 5208, Mobile South Street, north side of Mobile South Street, 650 feet east of Business Parkway from B5 to I1.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in this particular public hearing? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Today is a public hearing to fixed costs for securing structures at 145A Center Drive, 145B Center Drive, 145C Center Drive, the fixed cost for demolition of structure at 205 Ryland Street, 208 Ryland Street, securing the structure at 256 Rickaby Street, 23--demolition of structure at 2355 Bullen Street, 202 Adam Abrams Street, declare the--public hearing to declare the structure at 365 Chin Street a public nuisance and order it demolished at 1559 California Street, at 212 Norman Street, and public hearing to declare the structure at 704 Rice Street a public nuisance and order it secured slash demolished, and declare the structure at 7106 10th Street a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Now, is there anyone here that would like to speak in any of the public hearings that have just been named? We'll start here. If you all could make your way here, and we'll-- Yes, ma'am. Come on to the mic if you don't mind, to the podium if you can state your name and your address. That's okay.
My name is LaShandra Jackson, and the address is 202 Abrams Street. It's for the demolition of $1,400.
Yes, ma'am.
I actually don't have any objections to that amount. I was just here to ask how do I make the payments and could I have payments arranged on it?
Well, the gentleman that he would need to speak with is Mr. David Dauphinbach. He's right there in the back with the white shirt on.
Okay.
If you would just talk with him, he'll be able to tell you all of the various options.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. If you state your name and address if you don't mind.
Teresa Jones.
Truppa de Paige, 704 Rice Street.
Oh, that's the one.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, what we're here for is that that's my dad's house.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. That's my dad's house.
Yes, ma'am.
We want to try to keep the house. I've been there doing some repairs on it. The yard maintenance is up. As for city code, I talked to the young man here about it, and the only thing about it is the shed in the back. Because it's such a big area, it's hard for me to do it as a woman by myself, and I'm not really--my health-wise is not good in the city because I have so much debris and stuff, you know, from the shed, knocking it down myself by hands. I almost got fine, but they work with me because, you know, they see me trying to make an effort. So we asking you guys for a little time to get the shed taken care of.
While Fred's catching up, Mr. Chair, it was our understanding during the pre-council meeting, and I'd like to know here what your opposition is to this, and that is that we were simply gonna order the shed demolished. It sounds like you agreed that it needs to be demolished and that the structure be secured. That's all. We're not saying-- Right. --that we're tearing it all down or--
Just the shed.
Just the shed be torn down. And you can do it or we can do it. And Mr. Dauphinbach will be able to explain to you the procedure of making that decision, but otherwise, it must be secured and the shed must be torn down. We don't really care how it gets done.
And you have to, gentlemen, that I can capture with that.
Right.
It's just a shed.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Yes, ma'am. Thank you all for coming down. Yes, sir.
David Dauphinbach, Deputy Director, Municipal Enforcement. I just wanted to follow up on this with the comment that you've had from the two property owners. This is heir property, and these are the two surviving heirs, the sisters, and they are in the process of demolishing the shed. They've explained to me just now that they're about 70% complete on the demolition of the shed, and they're moving the debris off-site, and they're currently working on securing the structure with the doors and the window. So at this point, I would say if we could table this four to six months, and if we need to revisit, I'll be more than happy to put it back on the agenda, but I have confidence--
Okay.
--that they're going to make the required securing of the property that we need.
Right.
Yes, ma'am. Any other public--anyone else that would like to address any of the properties mentioned in these public hearings? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, David Preston.
My name is David Preston. I live at 4161 Winchester Drive in Mobile, District Four. I came and spoke before this council last month about the status of the city budget, the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget that led to a lengthy discussion and the revelation that there's some confusion about the status of the budget, some anomalies and discrepancies and spelling errors that has prevented the signature--the signature of the mayor of that budget. And at the end of that discussion, Vice President Manzi said that he was going to write a letter to the mayor's office asking for those clarifications that was sought by Councilman Small. And I was just calling--coming before you to ask, has that letter been written? If so, has there been a response from the mayor's office to that letter? And if so, if--what was that response, and can we see the response letter? And if it has not been--a response has not been received, when do you think we might be able to have a response from the mayor's office from that letter?
Mr. Preston, a letter was not written because we received--while we were having that discussion, the finance director came down, Mr. Paul West, and he communicated to us in that same meeting that there wasn't a whole lot of anomalies, that it really amounted to about a $3,000 to $4,000 variance. And so, Mr. West, if you want to, you know, espouse anything differently--
Not differently, Mr. Vice President. You're correct. There may be some confusion. Under Section 53, once the council adopts a budget, it is final, and it is in effect in--for this budget for fiscal 2019. So it's operative. The certification that was mentioned is something that the city clerk and the mayor do. That is, they sign the budget as certified after that point. It has no effect on whether the budget's valid or not, and the only reason that certification has not taken place yet is because of the mathematical error that was attended to the budget amendments. As I mentioned to you last time, I would have a conversation with Mr. Daves about how to proceed to get that taken care of. I've had one conversation, anticipate another. This is normal course of things. It's happened at least a majority of the five years that we've been here to cure mathematical errors.
Mr. Daves?
I'd just like to concur with what Mr. West said and tell the council that Mr. West and I have had a preliminary conversation on how to resolve the $3,500 or so anomaly.
Anomaly?
And I expect that we will come up with a plan for that, at which time I will communicate it to the council.
Do you have a timeline?
I expect we'll be able to do it fairly quickly.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
CIP resolutions held over. 13005 authorized change order number one to contract with McElhaney Construction Company for Grand Boulevard drainage improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved to second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Resolutions held over. There are no objections. I'll take all of these together.
Yes, ma'am.
21007 and 21008 are authorizing contracts with Robert J. Baggett, Inc., for gangway preventive maintenance and inspection technicians, Mobile Alabama Cruise Terminal, and for gangway stair improvement, Mobile Alabama Cruise Terminal. 21009 authorized contract with A&amp;M Portables for Mardi Gras 2019 portable toilets, various City of Mobile locations. 21010 authorized contract with Jubilee Landscape Management, doing business as Jubileescape for landscaping, maintenance, mobile museum of art. 21011 authorized professional services contract with Goodwood Mills in K-wood for programming and space planning services. 37012 approve the application of Sandra Page, doing business as Page Independent Transportation for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a shuttle service.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item's passed.
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 64001 through 84002.
The council rules these ordinances for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 40016 through 58030.
Motion to suspend rules for a meeting. Consideration of 40016 through 58030.
Second.
Proper motion and second in discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
40016 fixed cost for securing a structure at 145A Center Drive. 40017 fixed cost for securing a structure at 145B Center Drive. 40018 fixed cost for securing a structure at 145C Center Drive. 40019 fixed cost for demolition of structure at 205 Ryland Street. 40020 fixed cost for demolition of structure at 208 Ryland Street. 40021 fixed cost for securing of structure at 256 Rickaby Street. 40022 fixed cost for demolition of structure at 2355 Bullen Street. 40023 fixed cost for demolition of structure at 202 Abrams Street. 40024 declare the structure at 365 Chin Street a public nuisance and order it demolished. 40025 declare the structure at 1559 California Street is a public nuisance and order it demolished. 40026 declare the structure at 212 Norman Street a public nuisance and order it demolished.
So moved.
Second.
Proper motion and second in a discussion.
Did we say we're going to--
Aye.
Okay, okay.
Any further discussion?
Oh, no. Is there gonna be an amendment to make it table? I'm just calling--
No, no, we'll just table it.
We'll just table it.
I think we just table it. But you can't vote yes on all of them.
I haven't read all of them. I did not read that one.
This is just to consider them.
She had to call that prop down.
Can anybody be quiet just a second? Will you ask my question?
I've read all of them except Rice Street.
Thank you. That's what I was asking. Thank you.
Right. So we have a motion in the--
That's what we were trying to communicate, Mr. Williams. That's all.
Poorly. We did a good job.
But it's out of board.
I have a question, actually.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm sorry I didn't ask this at pre-conference, but since Mr. Dauphinbach is here, if he could tell me on the center drives, I realize that it's a securing, and I understand that those buildings have been demolished, so is there a timeline that I'm missing?
Fixed cost. Fixed cost of-- They're all gone.
No, you're not missing a timeline. This is a unique situation. The City of Mobile went through the securing process, the nuisance abatement to secure all three structures. We did that. However, afterwards, a new owner acquired the property and is going forward with the demolition, and that is why we see that that particular location, the structures are no longer there.
Right.
However, we still have a cost that we need to have fixed to the property, and that's why we're here today.
Because I know they tried to communicate months ago, so I did not pick that up, and I'm really sorry. I should have brought this up at pre-conference.
Now, additional information, Community Housing and Development has a program for this type of occurrence, that if a new owner comes in to acquire property, that we have an outstanding lien, and if it--and in fact, if the costs are fixed, then the lien would exist. He has the ability to apply for that program through Community Housing and Development for a lien forgiveness program if he meets that criteria.
I don't think they'll meet it. It was the developers out of town.
He may. That's why I strongly suggest that he reach out, if he's listening, to contact Community Housing Development so that they can at least apply.
Thank you.
Any other questions and further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
4027 declare the structure at 704 Rice Street a public nuisance and order it secured, demolished.
Move to table.
Second.
Proper motion and second to table?
Are we tabling it to a certain date? June?
No, just throw it out there.
We could pick a date.
Just table.
It was recommended four to six months. We want it to return.
Let's just table. We can't--
Mr. Dauphinbach wants to bring it back, he'll put it back on there, gentlemen.
Okay.
And we'll go from there.
Okay. All right.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
4028 declare the structure at 7106 10th Street a public nuisance and order it demolished. 4029 change the name of Stanton Street, north of Pritchard Avenue to Main Street to Stanton Road. 58030 authorized removal of weeds, group 1587.
So moved.
Second.
Proper motion and second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01031 through 35038.
Motion to suspend rules for a meeting. Consideration of 09033 and the rest for one week back out to rules.
Second.
Proper motion and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
09033 reallocate $1,000 from the general fund, District 6 discretionary account, general fund account, to Parks and Recreation, Connie Hudson Senior Center, general fund operating account, to reimburse them for the third annual District 6 senior Christmas breakfast held on December 7.
So moved.
Second.
Proper motion and second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Announcements.
Mr. Daves?
Thank you, Mr. Manzi. I just have a statement to make. Yesterday, I received a copy of the amended complaint filed by Mayor Stimson in the lawsuit currently pending between the mayor and the city council. The complaint contains excerpts from what is characterized as a draft answer and counterclaims by the defendants other than myself. Obviously, since I am not represented by the other defendant's counsel, I was not aware of the contents of the draft answer until I read it in the mayor's amended complaint. I was not consulted about, nor did I participate in the drafting of the counterclaims. I have not authorized those claims to be prepared or asserted on my behalf. I want it to be known that I completely disassociate myself with the allegations and demands contained in the draft answer of the other defendants to this action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daves. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, I would just like to say that I happen to report that resurfacing has started in District 1. Pennington Street, Pennington Street was among the worst in District 1, and happen to know that they have completed Pennington Street, Bernice Court, Rebecca Court, Rebecca Street, and they're moving on through other sections of District 1, but this little area here was in bad shape. They've gotten it, and they're moving on in District 1. Just like to say that citizens be patient. We're gonna get to everybody. Yeah, that's it.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
That's it? Mr. Williams?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Rich?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Gregory?
Wow. Couple of things. Yesterday, we put up the honorary street signs naming one street in particular in honor of Mrs. Joyce Chavers. You all probably remember when we passed that on the council's agenda on December 18th. So yesterday, we all met out in Mobile Terrace on Third Street and Lincoln to put up one of those honorary signs. So Mrs. Chavers and her family were there, and it was just really nice to be able to see those street signs going up. And something a little interesting happened, as you probably remember. Mobile Terrace was annexed into the city some time ago, when it had been, of course, part of the county. And when the two city employees from Traffic Engineering were trying to take the old signs out of the brackets, they couldn't get them apart because those were old county brackets. So we had to just put some new signs up altogether because in trying to get those signs out of the brackets, they were destroying those old signs. So, I mean, it was something that, who knew, sort of a moment. So anyway, we wound up putting up some brand-new signs in Mobile Terrace as well. And I want to thank the two employees who came out, because they were certainly good sports. We took pictures with them, and they were great to work with. Michael McCants and Darius Matthews in City Traffic Engineering. Also, thanks to Jennifer White for making this all happen, and her department for getting these new signs put together as quickly as she did. I also want to announce to everyone who does not know that mulch from all of our Christmas trees is available at city parks. I dropped by Langen Park this morning to take some pictures of the piles of mulch that are there. So go on by, pick up your mulch, and use it to help fertilize all your gardens this coming spring when you start planting. Since Mr. Daves brought it up, I do want to also mention that I too was not aware of any counterclaims, any threats, any sort of thing like that that was part of a news release in court filing that I received yesterday about the same time the media received it. So just as an official statement, this is a mediation. It is in court. It is confidential, and we don't talk about it. And that's basically the end of it. But again, if you asked me about it, I didn't know about it until you all in the media knew about it yesterday. Nothing goes into an official filing without the approval of the council. But again, mediation is confidential for a reason.
Mr. Small?
Thank you, Vice President Manzi. I'd like to piggyback behind my colleague, Mr. Richardson, about repaving some streets. There are streets that are now being repaved in District 3, but one particular one I want to point out is the one on Arlington Street. Arlington Street, it was getting really rough going down that street, but I'm grateful that last evening when I drove down Arlington that it's now getting fixed. So Arlington connects to Anne Street, which was done about a year and a half ago, and then Anne Street connected to Baltimore Street, and that is my goal for 2019 and '20, is to get Baltimore Street-- is to get Baltimore, um, Baltimore Street, um, totally complete, rebuilt. And, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, the administration, also with Mr. Nitt, for handling the resurface program, uh, for District Three. Also, I would like to, um, um, announce that on January the twenty-sixth, uh, from eleven thirty a.m. to one thirty p.m., uh, the Parkway Senior Citizen Foundation and the Lady of Lords Knights of Columbus will host their tenth annual, uh, spaghetti dinner. Uh, this is a fundraiser for the, uh, senior center on DIP, um, asking, you know, all the residents to come out and support, uh, this annual fundraiser event. Again, this will take place at eleven thirty a.m. until one thirty p.m. at our large Catholic church, Parish Hall, and that's located at sixteen twenty-one Barkin Boulevard, and it's dine-in or carry-out. Again, this will be also on Saturday, January twenty-sixth. Asking one, asking all the citizens, especially in the South DIP area, to come out and, um, support this fundraiser for the community, which is the senior center. Thank you, Vice President Manzi.
Yes, sir. I, I just knew it wasn't true. I knew it couldn't be true. Mr. Richardson?
This, this is real short. Um, Mount Sinai Missionary Baptist Church, and this is the one, um, on North Carolina Street.
Florence Street.
Florence Street. It's holding its Lamas Day program. This coming Sunday at eleven o'clock, it happens to be, uh, the church that Councilman Small attends. And, uh, they have invited me to be the eleven o'clock speaker Sunday, and I intend to be there. For the record, just wanted to say it.
Please make certain that that is a part of the record. And I know that they will have a great time, because they have a great speaker coming. Uh, I, I wanna just bear briefly, uh, a comment similar to, to, uh, Councilwoman Gregory in that relative to the mediation that city is involved in, the city council is involved in with, uh, the mayor's office. There are certain things that our lawyers have put together that have not been provided and presented before the entire council. Until such time has been approved by the entire council, it's not the will and or sentiment of the council. Uh, and those items are undermined. Uh, the knowledge that was provided to me, uh, those items should not have been disclosed outside of mediation. Uh, but we're gonna move forward with mediation in good faith, and, uh, and I want to stress again, uh, that certain items that have been disseminated publicly, uh, and have been disseminated under the guise that these are action items voted on or, and are endorsed by the council, uh, that is not the case. That is not the case. Until we met formally, and all of us have had an opportunity to have had input, uh, to have offered, uh, our perspectives relative to the direction, uh, that we're going in. And I, when I say all of us, that's all of us minus, uh, the individual council member who chose not to be a part of the group, which is the honorable gentleman from the Fifth District, uh, who started out our announcements with, uh, repudiating whatever has been put out there. Uh, that, you know, that's good that he did that, but in one hand, it was unnecessary because it hadn't been brought before the entire council. And it was released prior to the entire council, uh, all seven of us having an opportunity to sanction it or not sanction it. And so, uh, we're gonna move forward. Uh, the, as you can see today, and we say this, I guess with beating a drum, because we want the public to know, uh, despite what you've been getting in your inboxes, the business of the city is moving forward. Not one of gen item has been held up, other than those that would customarily be held up. So, the business of this city is moving forward, and we're gonna move forward with whatever we need to do with this process, uh, and with good faith, uh, to work with the administration to find a resolution to the two to three issues that we really have. And so, uh, that's what I wanted to say, and, uh, we'll be assigning some committee reports next week relative to, uh, the food trucks and other things on next week, and, uh, I believe, Madam City Clerk, that you get that notice from one about the need for, uh, do we have to notice that now for a special call meeting? Okay. Well, we'll work that out. Any other announcements from, uh, the council?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
I know I passed my, my option, so I appreciate your deference on this. Um, you know, I had a, I do a newsletter every week and try to give a summary, especially for the people that I represent, and I mentioned, and I also said it at council, that I was so hopeful that, um, the legislation that we passed last week, last Tuesday, or when we met, rather, on Thursday, um, and accepted by all seven through, um, consensus and working on the language that we were all comfortable with on handling contracts and how this council could be given more information, because more information is necessary to make quality decisions as a legislator. And, um, I too was disappointed to see the, um, paperwork that, um, came to my mailbox yesterday, because I was hoping that after seven council people with no dissent, um, really wanted to work with the administration, had made big overtures about if the language is punitive or, um, is burdensome in any manner, we would be willing to entertain changes. And I, I'm really at a loss to say that everything should be done in court. I know we're there. We're mediating. I didn't even understand. I thought when you mediate, then sort of things come to a rest. I didn't know you could add things, but obviously, I, I imagine that is allowed. The court entertained the new charges against this council. And again, I will reiterate, not to sound like a Pollyanna, because I live in the real world, but, um, when there is disagreements between the legislative arm and the executive arm, really, communication needs to get better, not more distance. And I will again urge, um, the administration to please reach out and work with council members. Each one of us have our own office. We have our own one vote. I know that, um, people say we don't have a president. We've, we've moved on. We've handled it in the absence of a president, but the president never speaks for the council on any issue unless we've legislated, and then they're free to speak. But, uh, basically, they conduct the meeting, they assign committees, and then they have the equal vote, just like all of us that sit up here and work together as a group. And so, um, reaching one or two council people, um, is not the answer. Um, it is really trying to reach all council people. I know, uh, my door is open. I believe that all council people have open doors where we're used to working with the public and having our names and our, um, faces out there. So, again, I will urge the administration to please ask and speak with the council as individuals, because we cannot meet as a group on, on a legisla- well, we could, I guess now, because it's already legislated and you might want changes. But again, I, I just can't stress enough that going to court is, um, really a nuclear option that I was hoping would be avoided in this round where all seven of us came out forward with legislation to improve transparency. And it's very clear that was our motive, not an agenda, but it's to make us better council people. Thank you.
Uh, any further notice, council members? From the administration? Is not, is there a motion?
A motion.
Adjourn, yeah.
I didn't hear a second. Probably motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.